Welcome, everybody, to January 2nd, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers for your convenience. At this time, we'd like to do the moment of silence, over reflection, and the Pledge of Allegiance, and this is going to be led by Gary Drews.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which we stand, one nation, one God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
First, we'd like to recognize Mr. Buschard back there. He is still the Commissioner at this point. It's good to see you, Mr. Buschard. What we're going to do is we're going to do the swearing-in, the oath of office for our three Commissioners, and they've agreed that at the end of the agenda, under items from Commission that they want to do, their thinking to their constituents and to the public at that point in times. But right after the swearing-in of all three Commissioners, we'll take about a five-minute recess or so, whatever it takes, so they can get their pictures taken with their family members and go around and shake some hands of the audience, if that's okay. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Jeff Davis, Judge Davis.
In the interest of fairness, I think we'll go alphabetically. Commissioner Drews, edit to you. And you have family?
I do. I'm Bobby.
Somebody want to couple the Bible? They're already nervous enough, so whoever has the camera and wants to come a little closer and take pictures, it's not going to bother me a bit, I promise you. Feel free to roll around and grab your pictures. Move your head over a little bit. This won't go without that, so raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Gary Drews.
I, Gary Drews.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of South Dakota.
Constitution of the state of South Dakota.
And I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully and impartially.
faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
discharge all the duties.
The Pennington County Commissioner.
As Pennington County Commissioner.
District Five.
District Five.
Render a true account.
And render a true account.
All money.
All money.
Credits.
Credits.
Accounts.
Accounts.
And property of any kind.
And property of any kind.
That shall come into my hands as such officer.
That shall come into my hands as such officer.
And pay over and deliver the same.
And pay over and deliver the same.
According to law.
According to law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All set? Thank you, Doc.
I.
I.
Deb Hadcock.
Deb Hadcock.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of South Dakota.
The Constitution of the state of South Dakota.
And that I will fairly.
And I will fairly.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And to the best of my ability.
And best of my ability.
Does a county fulfill the duties of the office?
Fulfill the duties of the office.
Will the Pennington County Commissioner?
Will the Pennington County Commissioner.
District Three.
District Three.
And render a true account.
And render a true account.
Of all money.
Of all money.
Credits.
Credits.
Accounts.
Accounts.
And property of any kind.
And property of any kind.
That shall come into my hands as such officer.
That shall come into my hands as such officer.
And pay over and deliver the same.
And pay over and deliver the same.
According to law.
According to law.
Congratulations, Jeff.
I thought this would be you. You know I was going to say the same thing. Hi.
Hi. Ron Roskinet. Ron Roskinet. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of South Dakota.
Constitution of the state of South Dakota.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
For the office.
For the office.
The Pennington County Commissioner.
The Pennington County Commissioner.
District One.
District One.
And render a true account.
And render a true account.
Of all money.
Of all money.
Credits.
Credits.
Accounts.
Accounts.
And property of any kind.
And property of any kind.
That shall come into my care.
That shall come into my care.
And pay over the same.
And pay over the same.
According to law.
According to law.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks for asking. There we go. It's like a president almost taking all his pictures.
That's a good one to give. Thank you, folks. Mark, are you still on?
I'm here.
Okay. Next, we come to elections of officers, and what would...
Gotcha.
With the predicament of being on a call-in, I was going to ask the Commission what they wanted to do with the ballot or the voice, but throughout this meeting, we're going to have to do a voice vote on everything. So I think, in the best interest of structure, that we just do voice throughout the whole election process. Are you okay with that?
That's fine.
Okay.
You bet.
Okay. I just want to remind you, Mark, since you're on the phone, to always look up at the sky thinking there's God there, but when we get into the meeting, can you remember to silence your phone before you speak?
You bet.
Okay. So with that being said, at this time, I'd look for... I'm going to open up the floor to nominations for Chair.
I would nominate Lloyd LaCroix as Chair.
We've got one nomination, Mr. Roskinet.
I will nominate Deb Hadcock for Chair.
Okay. So we have nominations. Is there any other nominations?
Lloyd, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I would like to nominate you for Chair again.
Yeah, I got that. Sorry. Couldn't see that I acknowledged that, but, okay. So we have two nominations. Any further nominations? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to cease nominations and go to vote.
I would still move.
Been moved by Gary.
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto. So we're closed for nominations. First, we'll go to a vote for Ms. Deb Hadcock. Roll call vote, please.
DeSanto?
No.
Drews?
Yes.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Roskinet?
Aye.
LaCroix?
No. So next, we... Congratulations, Ms. Hadcock.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Deb.
Finish. Finish.
You're supposed to...
Go ahead and finish him. We're still in the same thing.
Next, we go to Vice Chairman. Ms. Hadcock has chosen to let me finish it out. Okay, we'll go to Vice... Is there any nominations for Vice Chair?
Yes, sir. Gary Drews, please.
We have nomination of Gary Drew. Any further nominations? Seeing none, we'll have to go to a roll call vote.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Roskinet?
Aye.
LaCroix?
Aye. Congratulations, Gary.
Thank you.
So our new... Hadcock?
Next, we're on number six, Adopt Robert Rules of Order with Exception. Ms. Holly, do we have a discussion from you first, please?
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. This is simply procedural to a motion to adopt Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, 11th edition, including any updates or amendments thereto, but not to adopt the portion that precludes discussion of issues by the Chair or precludes the Chair from voting except where there is a tie.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Any discussion from the Board? How about a motion?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ron Roskinet. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroix?
Aye.
Roskinet?
Aye.
Hadcock?
Aye. Thank you. Number seven is Establish Commission Salary Discussion.
Madam Chair?
Gary... Commissioner Gary Drews?
I would... You want the motion first, or can I...
No, discussion first, please.
Okay. I do believe that we need to bring Pennington County Commissioners in line more with what's probably appropriate for salaries, and there's two parts to this. I do think that, following the first motion, that we should also ask HR to do a analysis for us, prepare information that we have at budget time, and we're not very far off from actually working on next year's budget, but to provide us... Bring back to us some numbers that we can consider for the year, starting with 2020. But my motion would be that we increase the salaries of the Commission by $100 a month, taking it from $1,500 to $1,600. That would be my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
More discussion?
Madam Chair... Or Chair.
Commissioner... You're okay. Commissioner LaCroix?
I'm not in support of this motion on the floor, because I think, although I agree with the process and having the analysis done, but my concern is, you know, we did the 2018... 2019 budget, and we didn't plan for this. And I understand that, you know, there's some variables in there, but I think for good budgeting practices, it should be budgeted in. I like the idea that this Commission's willing to look at this and work on it, but I think when we come to the 2020 budget, at that point in time, I would look for more of a motion to direct the Office Manager to include that in her budget for the Commission, and then we have that discussion at budget time, the same as we do with all the employees. I think, at this point in time, I think the Commission budget could absorb the 2.1%, the same as what the employees are getting. I think we could do that, but I just think it's good budgeting practice to put us on that cycle. It's a good idea. We've never done it before. It's always been the first of the year, and it throw... I think it kind of throws everybody on the loop when we do that. I just think at the budgeting process is a good time for that. Those are my thoughts at this time.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner DeSanto?
I would reflect the same sentiments that Lloyd just reflected, that we should wait until we put it in the 2020 budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We did ask Holly if it was in the budget for the $100 raise. It was sent in an email. The 2.1% raise would be $31.50 per month, and the $100 raise... Or 2.1% would be $31.50 a month, and the 6.67% would be a $100 raise. If I'm correct, Ms. Holly, do we have this in the budget this year, '19?
No, Commissioners, it was not planned for. However, with that being said, the Commission Office turns back money every year, just like every other department does. I do believe that we can absorb it somehow. There's ways to do that, but no, it was not planned for and it was not budgeted for. When we did budget discussions last year, the Board felt that it should remain the same, and I used the $1,500 figure for the 2019 budget.
Thank you. And just to follow up with that, maybe we need to do how we do the raises for Commissioners during the same time as budget, instead of... If it's by statute that we have to do it the first of the year or the first meeting, then is it by statute, or can we start doing it during a budget?
The appropriate time is to do it during the budget discussion, and we did have that budget discussion back last April or June... I'm sorry, June, when we had budget hearings to set 2019's budget. The Board did have that discussion on setting wages, but you are correct. Statute is very specific that says the Board of Commissioners shall set their salary at the first meeting of January, and if they fail to do so, the amount is set in statute, and I believe it's like $7,000 for the entire year. So you're kind of stuck in both time periods. You've got to make a decision in June when you do budget hearings, and when you set the final budget in September, that's the number that's anticipated to be used for 2019, but technically, by statute, the Board has to set it the first meeting in January.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. You're welcome. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair?
Mark DeSan... Or Commissioner DeSanto?
I would make a substitute motion that we stick with our 2017 salaries for 2000... Or, excuse me, our 2018 salaries for 2019, discuss our... The raise that we may give ourselves in the budget talks coming up this summer or this spring, and that would be my substitute motion, to stick with 2018. For now.
Thank you, Commissioner DeSanto. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
There's been a second for discussion.
Follow-up?
Commissioner DeSanto?
The reason I'm suggesting this is also to give our constituents a chance to say, "Okay, now the Commissioners are looking for a raise," and that way, we can field some phone calls and get their opinions and hear what they have to say, if anybody has to say anything as far as the public is concerned.
I apologize. That was my phone. I thought I didn't bring my phone with me today.
She's got to buy donuts.
Okay. Sorry about that. Mr. DeSanto, I apologize, sir. Could you repeat that? I apologize.
Okay, that's okay. It's apple fritters next week or next meeting, Deb.
Sounds good. Your favorite.
I'm just saying that I think that, in all fairness to the public and our constituents, that if we put it in the budget, then they have a chance to call us and let us know how they feel about whether or not we're giving ourselves a raise or not.
Thank you. Discussion?
Now, the only thing I want to add is that the budgets... Salaries remained at $1,500 a month for the last three years, so with that being said, other county employees are receiving increases, and so it's my opinion that the Commissioners should be treated the same and being treated fairly, so that's just my two cents worth.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Drews, please.
Well, one of the issues with it is, is that, obviously, this Commission has to establish their own salaries, and, you know, I think that there needs to be some sort of analysis to give us a number that we can base it on in the future, instead of going three or four years at a time before it's adjusted. It certainly needs to be adjusted as you look at it in comparison to other counties of even smaller, much smaller nature than what we are. And so that's why I'm making the motion that we do a little catch-up here for this year, ask for HR then to come back with some numbers for us to consider at budget time, and whether those numbers show an increase or a decrease, let it be at that.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroix.
Thank you. You know, I agree with Gary, and I just... After going through the budget, I just think it's not a good example to... At the first of the year, to do something like that when it wasn't budgeted or planned, and that's why I agree with it. I think we need the analysis. We've got a pretty good one, but I just don't feel it's responsible to do that when we've set our budget. I think it's setting a bad example to other departments. I mean, they could come up here and ask something similar. It's not budgeted, but we need... You know, that's what we have contingency for, and part of our contingency has... Used to be $100,000, and has gone down to... What is it, Holly? Now 40, 35?
No, 165, sir. It used to be 250.
250, okay.
Now 165.
Okay, so we've kind of reduced that down, but I think there's some other considerations when it comes to figuring out that salary. We're talking base salary, but Commissioners are also given the opportunity to take health care, which is an expense to the county, which is a $200 to $300 cost per month per Commissioner if they choose to take us. That is part of that, so when we start talk... Having these discussions, I would suggest at budget time that we have those considerations in there, too. Not everybody takes it. Not every Commissioner does, but it is there, and so I'm not really... I'm not in support of Mark's motion on the floor. I would be open to the 2.1, because, you know, those were one of the discussions we had at budget time, and we worked... The Commission worked really hard to... When the other department heads bring their budgets to us, they include the 2.1, whereas before we... Or the CPI. Whereas before, it was always asked. They wouldn't bring it, and then we'd end up discussing back and forth whether putting employees online with uncertainty. I think that's one of the biggest strides we made this year during the budget, was now that's part of it, and we made some big strides as far as the compensation and so forth in the Compensation Committee meeting, so if Mr. DeSanto was willing, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to his motion to add that, but otherwise, that's what I would recommend at this time, is to keep us in line. I don't want to see us get further behind. I think the 2.1 is fair. It's what the employees get. It catches us up a little bit. We get the analysis. We could take a good, hard look at everything together. But I agree, we shouldn't be not taking it and falling back every year, because that just gets us to a point where we take big jumps and then our constituents get upset.
Thank you. We do have a substitute motion on the floor, if we want to vote on that, or if we want to make a substitute to the substitute for the 2.1%, we can do that as well.
I think it'd be clean... I think it'd be cleaner to dispose of the one we have on the floor.
So Ms. Care, could you read the substitute back to the Commission?
To set the 2019 salary the same as 2018 salary, $1,500 per month.
Okay. We'll go ahead and vote on that. Roll call vote. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
No.
LaCroix?
No.
Roskinet?
No.
Hadcock?
No.
Motion fails. We're back to the original motion, and that would be the $100 raise.
Madam Chair.
Discussion. Commissioner LaCroix.
I'd make a substitute motion to take the CPI 2.1.
There has been a motion to take the CPI 2.1 raise at $31.50. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second.
Okay. Second for discussion? Discussion.
Just a little... I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Clarification that with the understanding we take 2.1, but at the budget time, we look at what the CPI is and get the analysis, and we have all those discussions.
Okay.
I think that has to be the caveat of the 2.1.
Thank you. Commissioner LaCroix, follow-up?
I'd just recommend that Human Resources, they do the study. I think they... John indicated he'd like to have that permission. The first quarter would be better, so I'd like to, in the form of a motion, ask... Formally ask Human Resources to do the research for us and tell us what's fair, so that we don't have to put ourselves on the line.
First, we should do the first motion, which is the 2.1%, and then if we could put that on the next agenda, or we can just tell John Morrell today that the Commission is thinking and going in that direction. Commissioner LaCroix?
I would accept that as a friendly amendment to add to it.
That's even better. Thank you, Commissioner LaCroix. So we're going to vote on the 2.1% raise and a friendly amendment to work with John Morrell on Commission salaries for coming up in budget time. Everybody okay with that motion? Okay, let's have roll call vote. DeSanto?
No.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroix?
Aye.
Roskinet?
Aye.
Hadcock?
Aye. Motion carries, with one no, Commissioner DeSanto.
Next, we're on Consent Agenda. Ms. Holly, if you could read the items nine through 15 on the Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, can I have you complete number eight, which is to review and approve today's agenda?
Sorry, that'd be good. I'm skipping ahead. Motion to review the agenda?
Still moved.
Mark, first. Second is Gary. All in favor? Roll call vote. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroix?
Aye.
Roskinet?
Aye.
Hadcock?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Holly, for reminding me.
You're welcome. The Board of Commissioners uses the Consent Agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The Consent Agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the Consent Agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's Consent Agenda contains the following items. Number nine is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of December 18th, 2018. Number 10 is to set the 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting dates. Number 11 is approval of the resolution for the Drug-Free Workplace Act certification for a public entity for 2019. Number 12 is to designate the Rapid City Journal, the Pennington County Current, and the Hill City Prevailor as the three legal official newspapers for Pennington County for 2019. Number 13 is approval of the 2019 poll worker salaries as submitted by the auditor. Number 14 is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 a.m. on January 15th, 2019, for Budget Supplement SP 19-001 for the MacArthur Fund, State's Attorneys, and Sheriff's Office budgets in the amount of $638,000. And finally, number 15 is approval of the 2019 Humane Society contract as submitted by the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the Consent Agenda? Not? At this time, is there any Commissioners who wish to remove any items from the Consent Agenda for further discussion? Mark?
Nope.
Did you have anything? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix?
I got, uh, ten.
LaCroy with number ten. Thank you.
And eleven, please.
And eleven. Any others? If not, can we have a motion for nine, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen?
Still moved.
Moved by Mark DeSanto. Commissioner DeSanto?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ross Connect. All in favor? Roll call vote.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye.
So that's approval of nine, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. Commissioner LaCroy, on ten and eleven, we'll start with number ten, sir.
Number, number ten, I requested to be pulled because I happened to look down, and we've got one full week for the budgets. Am I right? The eighteenth, we have a meeting on June eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first. Okay? And those are probably going to be planned out. I just, it was a full week. That's the only reason why I pulled it and wanted to bring it to everybody's attention.
Yes, typically, we do go Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, that week.
So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Otherwise, I'd move for approval.
Thank you. Commissioner LaCroy, thank you. Holly, for an also update, do we have kind of a date for equalization for new commissioners, so they know that there's equalization coming up in April, if I'm correct?
Yes, those dates are set in statute. It gives you a starting date and an ending date. And once the appeals come in, we know how to schedule appropriately. So new commissioners, you have to sit for equalization hearings in April. As we get closer, we will know what the exact dates are.
Okay, just a heads up with that as well.
Thank you.
You need a second.
Okay.
I think.
I think we do discussion, then we'll do a motion, if that's okay.
Well, no, I made a motion for approval, but there was no second.
Okay. Go ahead. Commissioner LaCroy?
I'll second.
Made a motion for approval of the number ten, and Mark DeSanto was the second.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call vote. Ms. Kara?
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
Hattco, or sorry, LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number eleven, Commissioner LaCroy.
The only reason why I had this one pulled up was to bring the attention to drug-free workplace and some of the policies. I don't really have any questions. I mean, there's been some discussion in public of, I mean legislative, about legislators being drug tested and commissioners and council members. That's the only reason why, when I read through it, there was nothing there. But I really have no other questions, just I just wanted to bring it to the attention that we do have the policy for the county, so.
Any other discussion on this item? If not, motion, please.
Move for approval.
Moved by Commissioner LaCroy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Commissioner Ross Connect? Thank you, Mark. Roll call vote, please.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number sixteen, we're starting from sixteen to twenty-two on the regular agenda items.
A point of order.
Yes, sir.
Was fifteen included in the first motion?
Yes, sir. Did you need to?
No, no, I just didn't hear the number called out as part of the first one.
I don't know if you said fifteen.
Chairman Hattcock said ten, or nine through fourteen. It really should have been nine through fifteen.
Ah.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Shall we do fifteen?
No, you're good. It's in the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I read it off my paper. Okay, so we're on reg, thank you, Commissioner. Regular agenda items is number sixteen, the regular agenda, sixteen through twenty-two. We're on number sixteen, and sixteen A would be designation of banks. Janet Saylor, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Janet Saylor, Treasurer. I have in your packets the designation of banks according to South Dakota Codified Law seven, two thousand and thirteen. I am requesting that the Board of Commissioners designate Wells Fargo Bank of South Dakota and First Interstate Bank as the primary active depositories for Pennington County. And I would like to advise them that we will utilize other financial institutions for short-term investments throughout the year. And I've attached that law to that.
Thank you, Ms. Janet.
I salute.
Any discussion by the board?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy?
Second.
Second by Drews. Kara, roll call vote, please.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Janet. And sixteen B, Public Depository Liability Quarterly Report. According to South Dakota Codified Law, Chapter four-six-A, three through four-six-A, seven, we have to, by law, check the South Dakota Legislative Audit's website. And I have done that and found that all the banks that the county is currently doing business with have all pledged the proper amount of collateral. These reports are updated quarterly, and any bank that does not fall under this for collateralized are called immediately. And they up the collateralization on the banks so that they are covered under the law. And I have a list of that in my office, if any of the commissioners would like to view it. It's like twenty-some pages long.
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ross Connect. Discussion? No discussion. Roll call vote, please.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Janet. Number seventeen is items from Human Resources. Commissioner DeSanto, this was brought by you. Did you want to go first, or did you want John to do discussion first?
Why don't we go ahead and let John do discussion first?
Okay, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Morrell, Pennington County Human Resources. So at the request of Commissioner DeSanto, we reviewed the current travel information that we have in our purchasing policy. What I'm looking for today, or would appreciate, is some advice or direction or guidance from the commission as to what they would prefer to have happen. The auditing and purchasing policy is dated January twenty-eleventh. The travel section, however, reflects that there had been some updates by the Board of Commissioners at a meeting in June of two thousand and fifteen. My opinion is that it would be beneficial for the county to draft and implement separate travel policies and vehicle use policies, as they don't exist today. The travel policy would standardize the travel process to ensure efficient use of county funds and improve guidance to county employees when they travel. A vehicle use policy would also ensure safe, efficient, and legal use of county vehicles by the departments and county personnel. So at this time, I'm requesting further guidance from the commission as to what your desires are with this process.
Thank you, John. Mark, since you had brought this up, I'll let you go ahead, if that's okay, and speak first on this issue.
You bet. I, after going through the vouchers for the past year, I had come up with, come to the conclusion that there was some waste in, in our travel expenses, in that I would make calls to the cities where certain conventions were being held, or, or places where we had our, people going for meetings for CE credits or whatever, and asked about the dates and hotels and what was available, and the cost of rental cars and stuff like that, and finding that there could have been a possibility that we could have gotten less expensive hotel rooms that were within a walking distance of a, of a convention. I know that it's easier sometimes to stay at the convention site, which is fine, unless we can save two hundred dollars a day on a, on a hotel bill. Some of the rental car costs didn't seem to be in line with when I would call those rental car agencies and mention a specific date and time. They'd come back to me with, no, we have vehicles available. So what I'd like to see, really, is kind of a streamlining where maybe our departments are doing a little more research on what's available as far as the hotel rooms are concerned. I, I didn't check into flights, so that, that's something that maybe John can direct us as far as how to go about getting the least expensive flights to and from these things. But, but I believe that we can save some money in the travel area by doing a little more shopping, rather than just grabbing the first available room or the first available rental car. And hopefully, hopefully, we can save the county a couple of thousand dollars a year.
Thank you, Mark. Any follow up? John?
Not for me.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy?
Thanks, Mark, for, for your input. And, you know, after reviewing some of the other descriptions and requirements for other policies that we set, I think bringing light to what you said is commendable. I mean, you're researching the work and doing some phone calls and so forth. But I, in my personal belief, I think, I think the recommendation for a separate policies is a good practice, and I, and I support that. The other part is, is there's so many variables when it comes to training and travel to be able to nail down. I mean, I could always make phone call, I'm not saying anything bad in decisions, I'm saying that that could happen, and, and, but there's so many variables, depending on the time of the year, who you call. And, and I have to put my trust into the department heads who approve that, because they're given X amount of dollars to train their employees for training. And if they aren't watching that, then somebody's not going to get trained. And I hate to put on so many restrictions and five sets of eyes to go through something. So I guess I'm in support of, of two separate policies, having you do that and bring it back.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. Discussion? Do you have a follow up? Commissioner DeSanto?
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
I would move to approve. John's moving ahead with establishing these policies.
The two separate policies?
Two separate policies.
Okay.
Travel and vehicle use.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, Gary got it.
Second by Gary. Mark is the first. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Number eight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Approval of vouchers, one million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight and eleven cents. Motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy?
I just have a question before the motion. I was going through this, is Brian here? I should have pulled it and kind of looked, but I was, I have one question for Brian.
That's okay. Brian, please.
And as I was going through them, now I probably won't be able to find them.
Your name, sir?
Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff's Office. Good morning.
Thank you.
Inmate movies. That's what I seen on the vouchers, was inmate movies for five dollars in some sense, and there was, I wasn't sure if that was a training video.
No, we, we, we collect money from inmate services and for use for, for commissary and those types of things. And part of that money needs to be spent back on the inmates. We do rent a movie a week for inmates to give them for good behavior. Generally, it's on Thursday nights, so.
Okay. I just wanted some clarification on that one, I'd say.
And due to copyrights and everything else, we do have to pay, you know, we have to pay for those. We usually rent, rent it. So we do it at the juvenile services center, and we do it at the adult center also.
Good information. Thank you.
So it's part of good behavior type? Okay.
It, it's an incentive for the, for the inmates, and only those who have behaved well through the week get to sit out and watch the movie, so.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any other discussion or questions for Brian? Any other discussion on the issue? Commissioner DeSanto?
Nope, I'm okay.
Okay.
Move for approval.
So motion, thank you. LaCroy, second?
Second.
Second by DeSanto? Roll call vote, please.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is items from chair and commission members. Commissioner LaCroy, B nineteen A, will speak about that, invites South Dakota DOT to the Crowell hearings. Commissioner LaCroy?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. We brought this forward because there's been, we're having the Crowell hearings coming this month. And there's been great discussion on the highway usage and what's required, who's doing what, and so forth. And we felt it better to invite the SD DOT to our hearings and give a presentation on what they viewed and seen. So what we're looking for is a motion to authorize the chair to request them to be here.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'd, so move.
Moved by Commissioner LaCroy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Second by Ross Connect. Any other discussion?
Has there been a letter sent to the DOT yet?
Commissioner Ross Connect, this is what we're doing now. What we do is, the board has agreed, if they agree unanimously on this, we move forward and send him a letter to invite him to the Crowell hearings.
Okay. I'd just like to know, once, I'd like to know when there's a confirmation, whether they're going to be able to make that. That's the only thing I ask.
Okay, sir.
So we, we can all stay on the, on track here.
I'll have Holly send the email when we send it, and the day we get a response. Is that cool?
We, we already do have confirmation, sir, from, from the local Rapid City regional individual. This is just the formality for us that DOT requires. We send a formal invitation, so.
Thank you, Holly.
They will be here.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Thank you, Mr. LaCroy. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Motion carries. The other item on here is commission members, and this would be a time if, if you'd like to speak and thank your constituents and people that had helped you get where you are today, I guess is a good way to put it, and commission members that have been here to speak on issues that they would like to move forward, or, move ahead on.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Gary Drews?
I, I certainly want to express my appreciation for all those that endeavor to work for me and with me on getting to this position on the commission. Especially, I want to thank my wife and children and grandchildren for their involvement. They did a lot of door-to-door work for, for me also. But just for the voters themselves, appreciate the support, and I'm going to try to hold their confidence that I'll be a good commissioner for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drews. Commissioner DeSanto, you're up next. Do you have any issues?
Yes, I would, I would also like to thank my constituents for their continued support and their encouragement, and I, I get a lot of phone calls, and I appreciate those phone calls. And, and again, I appreciate the criticism just as much as I appreciate the kudos. So keep, keep contacting me, and thank you.[1606.65]
No commission reports, Commissioner DeSanto?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No commission report. I'll let somebody else report on the, uh, on the hand games.
And I apologize because we have committee reports at the bottom and I did not see that. So Commissioner LaCroy, please.
Personally, I'd like to yield the floor and let you two, uh, Mr. Ross Connect and yourself, do your deal. And I'd like to speak last, please.
Okay. Commissioner Ross Connect.
Well, of course, I want to thank everybody that let me put the signs in their yards. But I guess it was just the support because a year ago, this is just a dream. I mean, even Jeff Davis, who would have ever thought? Well, it certainly wasn't me, but it is what it is. So I'm here today. I'm gonna run, uh, my platform was common sense, efficiency, and effectiveness. And those are gonna be the three words that I'm gonna try to remember during my term. And probably most importantly is teamwork. Uh, I think we got a strong commission here and, uh, we gotta work as a team. And the folks that I see here and the folks that aren't here, I think we're good players and you're gonna be proud of us. But I wanna thank Sue, who helped me put a lot of signs together, and my mom, who let me put a sign, first sign in her yard. And I want to thank my constituents. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make you proud. So, once again, thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
And me. I'd like to thank everybody. The staff here, since I've been in office, had made me, I feel, want to run again as well. Very efficient, very effective, and very well, are very good to work with. And I appreciate them. Number two, I welcome the two commissioners, I think, that work hard. And the two that have been on here before already do. So, um, everybody that helped me with my campaign financially, walked around, all different kind of work that they did. Can't speak today. I apologize. But I love this job. I love the people I work with. Couldn't do it with Ms. Holly and Ms. Joan without them. Very effective. Moving forward, I think it's gonna be even better. Better communication, better team. And I hope for the future that we get some things done for the county that needs to be done and we stay trustworthy and, and effective. So, um, thank you again to my constituents, my husband and my family that always has supported me. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Haggock. I'd like to say welcome to our new commissioners and the returning Commissioner Ms. Haggock and new chair. I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have done to make it here. I mean, you guys have been dedicated from day one, coming to the meetings, sitting through them. And so this wasn't all new to you. And that really means something, not only to the staff, but to myself, when I speaks volumes. As I've said before, one of the advice that was given to me when I first took office was to express yourself passionately, don't hold grudges, and don't create allies. You know, and I think that's the key point to getting along with this commission. And I think, I think we have that. And so I, that was just one of the expressions I wanted to make to both you guys. I want to congratulate you on the hard work that you've done. You've earned it. You deserve it, all three of you. And I welcome you aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. Well put. Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, let's move on to items from commission office manager, Ms. Holly Hennings.
Okay, commissioners, there's no action needed today on this item. This is simply a follow-up from a board motion back in September of 2018. Um, commission liaison Lindell Peterson had recommended that the county move to withdraw from the Mitchell Rapid City Regional Railroad Authority. And they did act on that request here, um, December 21st. And in your package, you will have the resolution that they have approved our withdrawal. And we're just waiting for the amended articles of incorporation from the Secretary of State. And when that's received, we will officially be out of that railroad authority. So just wanted to let you guys know that and stand for any questions if you have any.
Any discussion on that? If not, thank you, Ms. Holly.
Item number 21 is committee reports. So what we'll do is we'll go to DeSanto, LaCroy, me, and then we'll, Holly can fill out and kind of inform how our Pennington County Committee of Board descriptions for telling how we fill out what committees we'd like on there. Okay? So Commissioner DeSanto first, please, on committee reports.
I have no committee reports.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner LaCroy?
I have nothing to report.
And I have a couple. The fire service board, again, they are very busy, been going to that. Great group of guys, working hard. We did have a meeting last and brought up many things that have been happening. And I think this commission, as you will see, the new commissioners, they fill us in with, um, the fire service board chair, which is, I forgot his name.
Jerome?
Nope. Jerome Hari is our fire administrator, but for some reason, I can't think of his name.
Jeremy?
Jeremy. Walla, yes. Great group of guys. Lots of people attend those fire service boards. And if you have a minute, maybe come. That's usually the second or third Wednesday of each month. Good board. With the fair board, we're moving forward on the stall barn. The stall barn is vision fund from the city. They're just trying to figure out locations in different areas on the fairgrounds, flood zones, drainage areas. So they are moving forward on the fair board. I don't know why I can't speak today. So then the other issue is they are doing an economic impact study that will come forward, and that is huge for Rapid City. It's huge for Pennington County. And on that economic impact study, that should be out in the next couple of months. And that will help the fair board move forward on some of their stuff that they need to establish for the future. So on that, um, I'm done. So, Ms. Holly.
Um, commissioners?
Oh, sorry. Mr. DeSanto?
I just thought of something that I thought I ought to point out or bring to light and thank Lloyd LaCroy for receiving and making a decision at 4:30 in the morning, um, the night, the morning of that storm that we had a couple of days ago. Lloyd and I both got texts and phone calls trying to find out whether or not we should keep the, open the administrative building, county administrative buildings on time or hold off on that. And at first, didn't get a response, but then Lloyd responded and took the pressure off of me. So thank you, Lloyd.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lloyd. Also, I did forget, one more thing, Holly. Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. You were awesome chairman, an awesome and a very hard-working commissioner. I also enjoyed the LNI games Lloyd had given a gift to, um, Mr. Rain Counter, and I thought that was very awesome. But that was a great point of how teamwork's together. We lost those LNI games, but I can tell you, it was lots of fun. And that was also because Commissioner LaCroy set that up with Ms. Hennings. So thank you for your service and everything you do for us, Commissioner LaCroy, as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would also like to thank Lloyd. I think his leadership was excellent. I think that he ran good meetings and I really appreciated his service. Thanks, Lloyd.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Holly.
2019 committee assignments will be presented to you at the next commission meeting. I know you do have a short turnaround to get those back to me. I have Mr. Ross Connect's and Mr. LaCroy's. So if the rest of you can get your sheets filled out and back to me, I believe we gave you till the end of this week, so that the chair and myself can sit down and assign those committees and get it into the meeting packet for the next commission meeting on the 15th, so.
Thank you, Ms. Holly.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner LaCroy?
I can't help myself. Well, first of all, I thank both Mark and Deb for your comments. Those are heartwarming. But I do have to bring up the hand game that we had. I think that is an amazing event in our community that is starting. And Whitney Redcounter has done an amazing job of bringing the community together. And this was one of his big projects, along with the powwow and some other things. And he's doing an outstanding job of doing what he is doing. And I think it gotten so big this time, that's why there were so many people when we all showed up, that a lot of personal attention wasn't given to how to do this. And normally, we would do a practice game first. And so next year, let's do a practice game first, then go into the real. And that gets us all caught up. But it was fun and, and it's always good to get together with the city and have that. And there was numerous other agencies. Brian, didn't you guys go up against the police department or something? So, I mean, it's, it's kind of a good gathering point together. And the only other comment I would make is I invited Ms. Holly Hennings to come down because I feel, I wanted her to experience and see what was going on down there. And I really appreciate you taking the time out of your day to do that. I appreciated that.
Thank you. Follow-up? Ross Connect?
Practicing.
Okay. You're funny. Okay. We're moving forward to item number 22, a request for variance to ordinance 14 approval of second approach. Mr. Bradley Nible?
Hi.
Sir?
My name is Brad Nible, and I'm the one who's applying for this variance. Um, I was working on replating this lot into two separate lots. And after 18 months trying to do that, I've just given up on trying to get that split in half. Because it isn't, it just keeps rolling along and it never gets anywhere, so. But because there is an easement through the middle of the property that I was planning on putting the split line on, I kind of have limited access to the other half of the lot. So I want to have that second approach going into the lot so that I don't have to drive, drive over the easement where the water and sewer lines are located for a house that's above the property on top of the hill. The slope of the property makes it difficult to make any kind of access across that easement. And because those water and sewer lines are 40 or 50 years old, I don't want to put any more pressure on them than I have to. So I have applied for the second approach contingent on the lots would be split. But because it's not working out, I would just like a variance to leave that second approach there so I have access to the other half of that property. I'd like to do a house on one side and a garage or something on the other side so I can at least get some kind of use out of it.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Any just questions for Mr. Nible?
None here. Madam Chairman.
Commissioner Drews, please.
Mr. Nible, uh, as I looked at that, it appears that that second approach is already in.
Right. I applied for permits to put in two approaches to the two separate lots. And it was, uh, they were contingent on it being split, the two approaches. But because it's taken 18 months so far to try to get it split and it's not happening, I've just given up on that. I'm just tired of trying to get that split in half.
Okay.
And because I had to leave the easement in there, I really don't have any access to that other side, other than driving over that water and sewer line. And like I say, I'd rather not do that because it's 40 or 50 years old and I'm afraid I'll wind up replacing them both.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nible. PJ and Cody, could you bring us up to speed on this property a little bit? We do have new commissioners here and what's been happening on the planning and here from this point.
Sure. PJ, kind of a director of planning department. We don't, uh, our department doesn't have anything to do with the second approaches, but there is a construction permit the applicant has applied for, for the work that he's doing or started to do on the property. And then we got a complaint about it, so we had to come in and apply for a construction permit. There's still some conditions that were approved from the planning commission that the applicant had agreed that would, he would take care of, that he still has not met. I also do have a response from the City of Rapid City Development Review Group as to the, why Mr. Nible didn't move forward with the subdivision of the property. I don't have a, I don't have a copy for Commissioner DeSanto, so if you'd like, I can read it to you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, um, our planner, Cody, sent a request over to the City of Rapid City asking them for a summary of what was going on with the subdivision. This property is located within the plating jurisdiction of the City of Rapid City, and that's who he has to plat through. This came in on December 31st at 3:00 PM, was sent by Todd Pekosz to Cody SAC. Todd writes, "I will try to summarize the engineering issues that were associated with the proposed plating of Mr. Nible's property. On behalf of Mr. Nible, KTM submitted a design exception to waive the subdivision requirements to add curb and gutter, additional pavement, et cetera, for School Drive. The exception was approved contingent on submitting a drainage report demonstrating the existing ditch on the north side of School Drive could handle the 100-year event without overtopping the road and inundating the property along the south side of School Drive per city criteria. KTM's design report demonstrated the ditches were inadequate and needed to be widened to meet the requirement. I believe KTM made the recommendations to Mr. Nible that he revised his, that he revised his grading permit with the county to include the improvements to the ditch. KTM indicated the county would typically require a $5,000 surety for the grading to the right-of-way. Mr. Nible didn't want to make the improvements to the ditch, and for this and perhaps other reasons, he let us know he wasn't going to pursue plating the property at this time. Since Mr. Nible decided against plating the property, we have nev, we have never seen the final recommendations for the ditch from KTM." Cod Pekosz, P.E., Development Review Group Coordinator, City of Rapid City. We have a stop-work order that we issued on this property, I think it was early December. And the applicant was informed that there are certain criteria, conditions that need to be met before that stop-work order would be lifted. The applicant did make attempts to stabilize the property with some erosion blankets. When staff was out there, they didn't feel that he had done enough work on the property. Right now, with the ground frozen, it's not of big concern to us. But during the thaw, it is of a concern for us. But there is a stop-work order on the property, and there are conditions that the applicant is not only not meeting, but also, from what I understand from the planners, is also objecting to. And they were approved by the planning commission with the applicant present, and he had agreed to them at that time.
Do you have pictures, Cody, that when you went out there?
Uh, I do, but not with me.
Okay. Uh, discussion, please?
Are they in the J-Dry?
Mr. LaCroy.
PJ, this kind of caught me off guard with, uh, request for variance. We weren't in the board of adjustments. And that's a proper way. He's just requesting to be able to...
This is a, it's a, his request is to a county ordinance number 14, not zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And highway department is the one that usually helps you with that.
Okay. Follow-up. That, that helped me out. I just seen something and I was going through that. But we all have, I don't know, these newer commissioners haven't, but there was some emails that had gone out on some different stuff on this property. And, and I think at this point in time, I'm not in favor of this till I get, you know, from the report that planning department has given me. I'm not, not in support of moving forward with this at this point in time.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up?
Just, just a quick comment for the new commissioners. Neither the planning department nor the highway department have authority to approve a second approach. That's why you will see them. Usually, highway staff will be up here, but I understand there's more concern than just a second approach, so.
Okay.
That's what we're hearing today.
Can we hear from the highway department and see what their thoughts are on the second approach? I know you don't have to approve it, but it's nice to, you take care of our roads, so.
Joe Miller, highway superintendent. This second approach was approved back, I think, in September by Mark, so I'd like to bring Mark up for his input on this.
Okay. Mark, so you approved the second approach back then?
Morning, Mark Shock, Pennington County Highway.
Okay.
In July of 2018, two approaches were written for this property contingent upon final plating of Lot 2, Lot 2C of Block 6 and Lot 2D of Block 6. That was his proposal to the, to the city. So we did write an approach permit for each proposed lot contingent upon final plating.
Thank you.
Mrs., Madam Chair?
Go ahead. Mark, Commissioner DeSanto?
Mark, would, if he had asked for that second approach and not asked to split the property, would there have been a different decision made as far as giving him a second approach?
Yes. Ordinance 14 says that there will be one approach per residence. And so under ordinance 14, the highway department is restricted to that.
Thank you. Mark, do you have a follow-up?
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Okay.
Nope, that's all I needed to know.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions, board, for the highway department? Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of things. PJ, can you tell me what those conditions were and on that building permit that were not fulfilled at this point? Because I know he hasn't got the building permit on this property yet. Can we see the pictures one more time? If we could? Here's my point. PJ, I'm gonna speak first, if that's okay. I went out on this property with Mike, our code enforcement person, and there was already building going on with no building permit on this property. The ditches were overflowing. The gravel from the west side of this property was coming out onto the road because the drainage was not proper. The city wanted him to put, Mr. Nible, a holding pond and a culvert in there. And at this point, he decided not to plot it through the city. He was going to bring those two lots together. But when we, me and Mike went across the street, we were talking to some of the neighbors, and that hill there is causing some major drainage coming off of it. The property to the west has a two-foot wall, but it also, with that two-foot wall, it's draining around that wall and coming straight down. That's the first property of Mr. Nible's. And the second one, again, without a building permit, was already started and an approach was already made. So, bottom line here, I think personally, before I go to the next step and ask and have somebody put a approach in that's already there, I would ask them to follow through with the conditions of the building permit and then move forward to coming to ask for the variance for the property. So with that, PJ, please.
Sure. Hold on one second here. So your request about what conditions aren't being met at this time, this is for construction permit 1812, which was approved by the planning commission. Mr. Nible was present and commented and had agreed to these conditions. Some of them were amended at the time of the meeting. The conditions that I understand he's not meeting is condition number two, that... The conditions that I understand he's not meeting is condition number two, that cut-and-fill slopes be designed and constructed to minimize erosion, and design plans submitted to the Pennington County Drainage Engineer for review within thirty days. The other condition is condition number three, that the owner must inspect the site at least every seven days and within twenty-four hours of the end of the, of a storm event that is one-half inch or greater. This includes rain and snowmelt runoff. Inspection reports must be submitted to the Planning Director every month during construction. That was amended because the applicant had concern that he had to do it every time. The Planning Commission and our environmental supervisor made an adjustment that other people could do it on his behalf. As of this meeting, we have not received any reports. The other condition is condition six, that an engineered plan to stabilize the hillside, either by a retaining wall or by sloping the hillside, is developed, and this design plan submitted to the Pennington County Drainage Engineer for review within thirty days. These were, again, approved by the Planning Commission. Mr. Nibel was present. It was also put into a document which we call a Statement of Understanding, which we have applicants sign so that they can acknowledge that they agree and understand the conditions, and Mr. Nibel signed that, and it was notarized on November twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you. Board, any discussion? Commissioner LaCroy?
Thank you, Ms. Hackock. I'd make the motion to deny the request for the variance according to Ward Team Standards and, and approve the second approach on the property described, Lot A. So my motion is to deny.
There's been a motion to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been a second motion to deny by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Ross Connect.
Miss Chair.
Discussion? PJ Conover.
Madam Chair.
Hold on just a sec. Mark?
Just a clarification. I'm sorry, just a clarification. The motion is to deny both requests. I heard approval in there.
Yeah. I'd, I'd look, I, I did start to say approval of the second approach. I need clarification from Mr. PJ.
Actually, Lloyd, I'll do it. It's Ordinance fourteen, standards, and approval of the second approach. So you have two different things in there, Commissioner LaCroy.
Yeah. I had their approval. I guess I'd look. To do the second approach is already as, is because the lot's split.
The lot is not split.
It's not split.
It is not split.
It's not split now, so we'd have to deny the second approach.
If you want to.
I, and, no, I want to hear some more comments.
Okay, so can you repeat the motion then? Commissioner LaCroy just said, Miss Care.
To deny the request for variance to Ordinance fourteen standards and approve a second approach at the property described, and then the legal description is...
Is that what you...
Yeah, that, that was my motion.
Okay.
So I think we need some more discussion on that.
Okay. Any other discussion, Mr. Nibel?
This, this variance that I'm asking for, for the second approach, is my attempt to try and get this property to where the Planning and Zoning Office wants it to be with their requirements that they had on the construction permit. This was something that was kind of open-ended because I didn't go ahead with the lot splitting, and so that's why I went ahead with this variance first, was to get the approaches legal so that I can continue forward to meeting the requirements. I have spoken to Davis Engineering about doing a site plan for the property, but they've got to know kind of what I'm gonna do with it before they can give me the site plan, before they can, you know, for drainage, they have to know what I'm gonna do, what kind of buildings I'm gonna put there. So, this, I guess, was my first step into bringing that into compliance with what they want done. And I'm not sure why there would be any problem with it. I'm not asking for anything that other properties on that street already have. There are several properties on that street that have two accesses to one lot. Right next door to me at thirty-four seventy-three, they have two accesses to their lot, and it was just approved in the past year for him to, he's got two paved driveways on each side of his house. Just down the street, I believe it's Tom Wooden, lives up on Patterson Drive, he has a second approach coming in from School Drive that he had to get approval for when they put the road ditch in, and redo the culvert up to the size they wanted. So, I don't think I'm asking for anything that anybody else on that area or that street hasn't got already, so I don't think I'm asking for anything out of the ordinary or out of line. I'm asking for the second approach.
Okay.
And as far as getting a construction permit and compliance, this was my first step in trying to get that done so that everything is where it's supposed to be.
Thank you, Mr. Nibel. Mark, follow-up?
Yes. Mr. Nibel, I would have, I was leaning towards, and still am leaning towards, approval of a second approach. I appreciate your explanation that, that did not come through at first, that you couldn't get the other work done without using, without that second approach. Is that the case? That you can't get the other work done because you've got to drive heavy equipment over your sewer and water lines unless you have approval of that second approach? My second concern, though, is I was in that planning meeting, and you did agree to, given us those reports and progress reports and that kind of stuff, and I'm kind of concerned as far as your follow-up on that is, is concerned. So, I, I would lean towards approval of that second approach if that is necessary for you to complete those requi, those requirements that you'd agreed to at the planning meeting.
Well, the second approach isn't necessary to complete those requirements, but in order to make any use out of the second half of that lot, I have to have that second approach because of the water and sewer line that runs through the middle of the property.
So that kind of, that brings me back to my question. These things were asked of you thirty days ago, and it doesn't seem like there's been any work done to address those requirements.
Well, I did put down straw mats on the property, and I put down gravel on what was going to be the driveway. So there has been some work there to stabilize the ground, and like I said, I spoke to an engineer about getting that site plan, but once I stopped the replating process, I contacted him and told him I had to take care of these other things before he could start on the site plan, because he has to know what I'm gonna do there.
Okay. Well, I do agree, I've, I've gone by and viewed the property and viewed the street, and I know School Road is not a busy thoroughfare or anything like that, and there are multiple other properties with two accesses to, so I guess, I would, I would, well, it's already been second, and Lloyd did ask for approval of the, clarified for me. Did Lloyd ask for the approval of that second access?
Yeah, that was part of the motion.
Hold on, Lloyd, hold on, Lloyd. Are you done, Mark?
I'm done.
Okay.
I did want to say one thing about, somebody said something about gravel from the other lot coming out into the street.
Yep.
That was a request by the Planning Department for that property to have that gravel driveway, because if it was concrete or asphalt, it would cause too much drainage. So the reason that whole driveway is gravel is because that was the request made at the time that I built that other house, that that be left in gravel so that it would have some absorption of the waters to limit the runoff. So...
Okay, some, okay. Thank you, Mr. Nibel. PJ, just a question of a follow-up, basically with Mark's questions. With those conditions that need to be met and haven't been met, can he still do those conditions without having this second access there? Can he still get on the property? Can he still do what he needs to do without us...
My understanding is he does have an approach.
Right.
He can use that. That's about all.
So he already has approach, and he doesn't need the second to follow those conditions that he was supposed to meet in the first place?
I don't believe he needs the second approach to follow the conditions.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you. Here's my bottom line. If Mr. Nibel was following through with all the conditions and followed through before, I would believe that this would be good to do the second approach and move forward. But since he hasn't followed through with the conditions and started this process with stop-work order because he's doing things without permission or permits, I believe the second access isn't necessary. I'm with the Planning Commission. They have access and they can still check on those conditions, and my point would be, if you follow through with all those building permit con, conditions, then if you came back, I personally would probably say second, second approach. But my other issue is the holding pond and the drainage that's coming off that property, the first property you had built, let alone the second, there might be gravel coming through, but you have like a two-foot drainage or a two-foot retaining wall in the back that isn't holding back pretty much anything when that hill, if you look at it, is starting to fail. So, some of those conditions and some of those things and, that are being done already are not working. They are coming on to the neighbor's property across the street, so something that, and how you're building is not working. That's why the city, I think, has got involved, and I think the Planning Commission has stalled this out, and the Planning Department has put a stop-work order. You have to follow the conditions in order for things to work. When me and Mike went across the street, the neighbors in the trailer cart, and that is a trailer cart, are flooding a little bit, not from only drainage coming from the west, but they're, they're flooding from that hill, and you've already dug on that hill, and some of that stuff that's coming off onto their properties is from your approaches and things that you did with no permission. So you're actually affecting other people. So we, we don't mind, I don't believe, that there's second approaches, is that we follow the rules when we're doing them, so we're not affecting the other properties when we do it. So, that's my opinion, and I, I won't be voting for the second approach myself. There is a motion on the floor. Commissioner LaCroy?
I need to ask a question of PJ, and then for clarification, and then a follow-up.
Yes, sir. PJ?
Yes, sir.
Part of the question is, is to approve the variance would do what? Explain.
That's probably a question for Highway Department, sir. To approve that variance would be to approve the second approach on that property, so granting that variance would grant the second approach.
So, actually, the motion on the floor kind of defeats itself.
Correct.
I withdraw.
Do you withdraw your second, Ron?
Correct.
Okay. We need a new motion. Board?
I guess I need a little more help before I make a motion, so I'll do my follow-up.
Okay.
So, we've already approved, your department's already approved the second approach if they followed splitting the lots as required and so forth.
That is correct, Lloyd. Contingent upon splitting of that lot.
Yes.
Mark did approve the second approach, and to PJ and, I believe, Mr. Nibel said there's several other properties on that School Drive. That Ordinance fourteen was revised in two thousand and five, and I believe Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, ninety-six was in, when it was wrote? Nineteen ninety-six was when it was wrote, so a lot of those properties were prior to that.
Okay, one more follow-up. So if, to dispose of this, we deny both, that puts him back into where he needs to go back and do his, split the lots like they're supposed to, and then he can have a second approach?
That is correct.
Lloyd, just, just one thing. I think Ordinance fourteen standards are, have the approach in it, right? That's why the Ordinance fourteen standards is why you're saying with the variance. It's based on, the variance is based on Ordinance fourteen standards.
That is correct.
Okay, so it's not like two different things. It's based, the ordinance for the variance is under Ordinance fourteen. Understand that? Okay. Sorry, Commissioner LaCroy. Do you have a follow-up?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Deny or approve?
I'd make a motion that would deny.
Been a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
With a second. Discussion? Roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews? LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hackock?
Aye.
Motion to deny is approved. Thank you for the discussion. Item twenty-three is Items from Planning. Do we need a break?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Move to take a five-minute break.
Five-minute break by LaCroy, second by Drew. Five-minute break. Thank you, folks. We'll start in about five minutes.
Aye.
Oh, roll call, sorry. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hackock?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Board of Adjustment, number twenty-three?
Board of Adjustment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm there.
Move to go into Board of Adjustments?
Move?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Drews, to go into Board of Adjustment. PJ?
Do you want me to take roll call?
Oh, yes. Roll call. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hackock?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Miss Care, for reminding me.
Ma'am, if I may, Assistant Director Bolstad will be the one presenting her item for the Board of Adjustment. Just wanted the new commissioners to know that the Board of Adjustment oversees the variance requests for the Pennington County zoning ordinance. You do hear the word variance a lot, but these variances are to the ordinance itself, and that requires, I believe, four out of the five approval for whatever the motion is. So, just want to let you know, it's a little bit different. That's why you guys do close as the Board and then come back as Board of Adjustment, because it's a higher standard for variances that go against the rules of the county.
Thank you, PJ. Bottom line is, on a Board of Adjustment, is that it needs four out of the five votes, otherwise it's denied. It's not like the normal three to two, meaning once there's two that vote no on this, the, it's shut down.
And you'll also see that, as it is written in the staff reports that you will see in the future, there are state criteria for variances to meet, and staff does cover those during the meeting for you.
And he, and he will read those three criteria. Am I correct, PJ? Four, sorry. Okay.
Good morning. Cassie Bolstad, Assistant Planning Director. The item that we have for Board of Adjustment today is variance eighteen nineteen. This is a request to reduce the minimum required front yard setback from twenty-five feet to seventeen feet for an existing detached garage. The applicant is Seven Wonders Jessica Hessler, and the agent is Fisk Land Surveying. There is a representative from Fisk in the audience today if you have any questions. As this property exists today, it is zoned low-density residential district and a little bit of General Eagle Culture District as well. This property that the garage lies on is zero-point-four-zero acres. There is special flood hazard area, including floodway, on this property, and this property currently contains a single-family residence, a detached garage, and an onsite wastewater treatment system. The applicants are in the process of combining those three lots that you see on the screen right now into one lot. That request was approved by the Planning Commission on December third and the Board of Commissioners on December eighteenth, so they can now move into the minor plat phase of that process. They propose lot will be called Lot One Revised of Block One of Forest Homes Development and will be one-point-zero-two acres. The variance request was routed through the inner departmental review process, and nothing of significant concern came back on this request. A little history on this detached garage. In April of nineteen ninety-eight, the county board at that time approved a variance ninety-eight oh-two to reduce the minimum required side yard setback from twenty-five feet to ten feet to replace what was previously an existing detached garage. That variance did not reduce the minimum required front yard setback, which is twenty-five feet in a low-density residential district, according to our zoning ordinance. In, on April twenty-second of nineteen ninety-eight, there was a building permit that was approved for the twenty-four-by-thirty detached garage that exists now. However, a site survey performed by Fisk recently indicates that the detached garage is seventeen-point-one feet from the front property line. I also do want to note that there is a portion of the existing residence that also encroaches into the section line right-of-way, as you can see on this depiction here. I have discussed that with the agent, and the applicant will be required to vacate that portion of the section line to bring that into compliance, but the setback variance will bring the garage into compliance. The applicant applied for this variance in October of two thousand and eighteen, and this variance was actually continued on the December continued on the December 4 and December 18 Board of Commissioners meeting, so that's what brings us to today. So those four criteria for the variance request that PJ mentioned, the first criteria is that specific circumstances or conditions, such as exceptional narrowness, topography, or sighting, exist. Staff has verified through building permit records that the detached garage was constructed in 1998. The second criteria is that the variance does not grant a use, which is otherwise excluded from that particular district. This setback variance would not grant a use, which is otherwise excluded from property zoned as low-density residential district. Detached garages aren't allowed use in that zoning district. The third criteria is that due to the specific circumstance or existing condition, strict application of the zoning ordinance would be an unwarranted hardship. Strict application of the zoning ordinance, in this case, would require the applicant to meet or exceed that 25-foot setback from the front property line, which would require the applicant to remove a portion of the existing garage or move it further back on the property. And the fourth criteria is that granting of the variance is not contrary to the public interest and is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. Granting this setback variance would allow for a reduced setback in a low-density residential district, which is not in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. However, at the time of this staff report, and even until today, staff has not received any complaints or comments from the public regarding the variance request. So if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve variance 1819, staff recommends two conditions be included.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto, please.
Move for approval with two conditions.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by DeSanto, second by LaCroy. Discussion on this motion.
Madam Chair, could I ask a question? The, they're required to vacate the section line where the house is. Now, this plat was, it was platted in 1961, so I'm assuming that when they platted, that they knew that section line went through there, and so the plat was approved in 1961. My question is, the section line right of way is to grant public access, and if you look at, I went and inspected the property, so if you go from Highway Forest Road, that section line does tie right back into Highway 44, so I just wondered, for them to vacate that, they have to get 300 signatures, and I just feel that that's a burden, but if there's a statute that says they have to vacate it, then so be it. But there's also another alternative, and would that be relocate it along the property boundaries, so that, I've done that myself, so I just wondered if that would be a possibility, opposed to having to go out and get 300 signatures.
They can, they do have the option of either vacating it, or they can relocate it. Yes, that is an option for them. It just, they have to somehow make some sort of action that takes that house out of the section line right of way.
Okay. Just wondered if there is an alternative besides the vacation of it.
Yes, they can relocate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross Connect. Good information. So we do have a motion? Any other?
Madam Chair, I have a question, too. Can we go back to the first picture?
Yeah.
That we had there? Just described under the orange line, is that showing the setback?
The orange lines that you see right now, this is an image taken from our Rapid Map system that we use. These are not survey quality lines that you see on this map. The orange lines are meant to show the property boundaries, but as you can see between this picture and the boundary survey that was done by Fisk, they're a little off.
Okay.
Any follow-up, sir?
That answers my question. No.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not, we have a motion? Roll call, please.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haddock. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing, we have found out recently that the number of signatures required, because it's 1% of the last gubernatorial election, it's over 400 signatures now, sir.
Yeah, it seems, that's five times what it took me, or took me to become a commissioner.
Yeah, yeah. It wasn't the 300, it's now up to over four.
Wow. Thank you for that information, PJ. Just a motion to come out of Board of Adjustment, please.
So move.
Moved by LaCroy, second by Drews. Roll call, please.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haddock. Aye. Motion carries. Next, we're on the consent agenda for the Planning Commission, Planning Department, PJ Conover.
The Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item B, second reading of rezone 1808 and comprehensive plan amendment 1807 for Seven Wonders, Jessica Hessler, Fisk Land Surveying as the agent, and recommend, sorry, approval has been recommended. Item C, minor plat 1843 for Robert Rowe, Rentner Associates as the agent, and approval has been recommended. Item D, minor plat 1847 and subdivision regulation variance 1814 for Brett and Linda Hilgeman, and it's been recommended to be continued to no later than the May 7, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you.
Whoops, no, sorry, got a couple more.
Go ahead.
Item E, minor plat 1848 and subdivision regulation variance 1813 for TDG Real Estate, Michael Gennaro as the agent, and approval has been recommended. Item F, major plan unit development amendment review 1704 for Kelly Development, Ryan Kelly as the agent, it's been recommended to be continued to the February 5, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting, and these are recommendations from the Planning Commission, not staff. Sometimes they're the same, sometimes they're different. Just wanted to let new staff, new commissioners know.
Thank you, PJ. At this time, is there any citizen who wish to remove any item from the planning consent agenda B through F? Commissioners, is there anyone that would like to remove any items from the planning consent agenda for further discussion? If not, motion, please.
So move.
Moved by Ron, Commissioner Ross Connect, and Commissioner Drews. Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haddock. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're on regular agenda items, J through L from the planning. Let's go number G, I mean, G through L.
All right. Item G is layout plat 1845. This is a request to create Hicks Tract. The applicant is Edward Hicks, the agent is Faith Lewis, and the surveyor is Anderson Engineers. This property today exists in a general agriculture district. It is 140.61 acres in total. Proposed access to the property that they are subdividing off will be off of Ditch Creek Road, and the property in its entirety currently contains a single-family residence, onsite wastewater treatment system, and there is special flood hazard area on this property as well. What they are proposing to do is to create Hicks Tract, which would be basically this little section of the existing property over here. They are just planning to subdivide that off, so Hicks Tract would be 6.68 acres, which does not meet the minimum lot size requirement for a general agriculture district by our zoning ordinance, so they will be required to obtain a rezone and comprehensive plan amendment or a lot size variance before they file this plat with the Register of Deeds. The request for the layout plat was routed through the Interdepartmental Review Process, and nothing of significant concern came back on this request. For the purposes of a layout plat, staff does not find any significant issues with what they are requesting to do, so staff and the Planning Commission recommended approval of layout plat 1845 with 10 conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Bolstad.
Move for approval.
Moved by Commissioner LaCroy.
Second.
Second.
Second by Ron Ross Connect. Any comments from the public on item G? Would like to speak on item G from the public? If not, roll call, please.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haddock. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item H, please.
Item H is layout plat 1846 and subdivision regulation variance 1812, which is to combine two lots to create Lot 1 of RTHV subdivision, and a request to waive platting requirements. The applicant is Sam Fisher and Fisher Development, and the surveying and agent is Fisk Land Surveying. Sorry, let me just change the page here. So as stated before, the applicant is looking to consolidate these two lots into one, and the subdivision regulation variance request that they're looking to have waived are percolation tests and soil profile hole information, topographic map at 5-foot contour intervals, plat at 1-inch to 100-foot scale, road improvements and designs and design standard submittal, length of a dead-end road, and intermediate turnarounds. As the property exists today, they're both zoned general, sorry, general agriculture, which have a 40-acre minimum lot size. Neither meets that required lot size, but they are legal non-conforming or grandfathered for lot size. And again, the applicant is requesting to consolidate these to actually, it would be a non-issue if the request was approved. The proposed lot would be over 40 acres. At this time, we understand it would remain general agricultural as the zoning. It is vacant of any structures. There is no special flood hazard area on the property. There is a 66-foot wide road easement for Traxi Lane, which is recorded through the Register of Deeds. This was routed through the Interdepartmental Review. No items of concern came up. As far as the subdivision regulation variances as well, staff has no concerns with the request from the applicant. Again, the applicant is looking to decrease density in the property instead of having the possibility of two single-family residences out there. This would decrease it down to one. So staff has two recommendations. The first would be recommendation for subdivision regulation variance 1812, which is to approve subdivision regulation variance 1812 with the six requested waivers.
Do we have a motion or discussion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Drews.
You need those two different motions?
We need those two different motions. PJ, this would be the first motion we're talking about right now, right?
Correct.
Okay. First motion first, Mr. Commissioner LaCroy. Any discussion? If not, from the public, do we have anybody who would like to speak on item H? If not, roll call, please.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haddock. Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Conover?
Sure. The second recommendation is to approve layout plat 1846 with eight conditions, and one extra little bit of information, again, for the new commissioners, this is a layout plat, which is the first step in the process. If the applicant does choose to go forward with this, it will come before you again. That's why you see condition number eight in 1846, which reads that the approval of layout plat does not constitute approval of any further applications to be submitted for the above-described property.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Discussion from the board. If not, roll call, please.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haddock. Aye. Motion carries. We're on item I, please.
I and J are two items that are associated with one another. The first is minor plat 1837 and subdivision regulation variance 1808 for Paul and Carol Niemann. This is a request to combine two lots in order to create Niemann Trust Tract and to waive platting requirements. The surveying company is Anderson Engineers. The landowner is in the, in the, in the audience today if you have any questions. Thank you so much. So what the applicant is looking to do is to, as you can see here on the left side, is to combine existing Lot O with Lot A. As you read in the staff reports, the applicant has been at this for several years, trying to find out who actually was responsible for Custer Gulch Road, because existing Lot A, they wanted to basically combine that into Lot O. Unfortunately for the applicant, it has taken many years because the different street authorities, nobody wanted to take any responsibility for that portion of the, of the public right away, and then give the applicant the, basically, authority or the permission to absorb that into existing Lot O. The applicant actually did receive approval from the South Dakota Transportation Commission on May 25, which allowed him to take ownership of existing Lot A in the right of way, and to then move forward with the consolidation into Lot O to create Niemann Trust Land Tract. The applicant also has conditional use permit on the property. In 2016, he submitted to request to have a pole barn, pole barn on the subject property prior to a principal structure, principal use. Principal use out there is usually like a single-family residence or a home, and to have accessory structures like that requires conditional use permits in Pennington County. That was approved in 2016 with conditions, and then again, up for review in 2017, and was approved again for an extension. As of this time, the pole barn has not been built. The property still remains vacant, and the applicant has been very diligent about moving forward and getting things done to consolidate this property. The applicant is also requesting to waive engineered road construction plans and road improvements, submittal of topographical map, percolation tests, and soil profile hole information. This was routed through the Interdepartmental Review. No items of concern came up, as the applicant has basically handled everything on his own up to this point. During the hearing of layout plat 1827, which was the step before this, some concerns were raised about the difference in acreage from the original plat of Lot O. The surveyor, Dustin Ross of Anderson Engineers, has submitted a letter kind of explaining what the discrepancy between the lot sizes are, and that should be included in your staff report. So similar to the other requests, staff is asking for two different recommendations. The first is recommendation for subdivision regulation variance 1808, which is to waive submittal of engineered road construction plans and road improvements, submittal of topographical maps, and percolation tests and soil profile hole information at this step in the process.
Thank you. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to speak on item I, on variance 1808? How about from the commission?
I'm familiar with the property. I've inspected this one, too, and I would be in favor of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any other discussion? Not? Roll call, please.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haddock. Aye. Motion carries. Second part, PJ, please.
Yep. As stated before, the applicant has gone through the layout plat process and is now at the minor plat process, which his specific request, this would be the last approval This would be the last approval for this consolidation. And staff would recommend approval of minor plat 1837 with nine conditions.
I would move for approval.
Move by Ross Connect. Second by Drews. Any discussion from the public? Any discussion from the board? If not, roll call, Ms. Carey. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item J?
Item J is related item. It's rezone request by the applicant. It is first reading and public hearing of rezone 1807 and comprehensive plan amendment 1806 for Paul and Carol Nieman, which is request rezone 16.7 acres from general agriculture district to limited agriculture district and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from plan unit development sensitive to limited agriculture district. The applicants are Paul and Carol Nieman and Anderson Surveying is the agent. This is the property again you just approved the minor plat for. As you can see on the screen, the area that, whoops, let's see, has the dot in it, is zoned general agriculture. It requires a 40-acre lot size minimum. It does not meet that at this time and is legal non-conforming for lot size. The little white area where I just drawn line does not have any zoning district associated with it because it was public right-of-way up until, well, it still is until the plat is actually recorded. So the applicant is looking to rezone both properties and bring it into conformance for lot size to limited agriculture district. Upon staff recommendation, the applicant also submitted a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use from general, I'm sorry, from general, yeah, from plan unit development sensitive to limited agriculture district. After further review of the plat and getting a little bit deeper into it, that wasn't probably the best thing to do. So staff is going to, in the future, going to request that the applicant does receive money back for the comprehensive plan amendment application because staff is not looking to approve that because we'd like to leave the comprehensive plan as is for plan unit development sensitive. The applicant is aware of that. So with that, this was routed through the interdepartmental review. Again, no items of concern came back on this item. And there is the conditional use permit still on the property that is still active. It will not need to come up again for the rezoning or the replating until its proper review date. And with that, staff has two recommendations. The first is to approve rezone 1807.
I'd move with the two conditions.
Motion by Drews, second by LaCroy. Discussion from the public? Discussion from the board?
Sorry, just so there's no confusion, there were no conditions with that, sir.
Okay, with no conditions. Right, roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Second part, please.
Staff recommends denial of comprehensive plan amendment 1806.
Denial 1806. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Move to deny by LaCroy. Is there a second?
It was to approve.
To approve? I thought you said deny.
Deny. Oh, deny, sorry. You're right.
Okay. It's okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Drews. And any discussion from the public? How about commission? If not, roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item K, please.
All right. Item K is rezone 1809 and comprehensive plan amendment 1808, which is a request to rezone 69.62 acres from general commercial district and general agriculture district to general commercial district and to rezone 560 acres from general commercial district, general agriculture district, and low-density residential district to heavy industrial district and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from general commercial district, limited agriculture district, and low-density residential district to general commercial district and heavy industrial district. Don't worry, I have maps to show what all that means. The applicant is Pat Hall. The agent is Brian Hammerbeck. And the agent is in the audience today if you have any questions. Again, this is going to encompass 629, approximately 629 acres. The purpose of the rezone request, per the landowner, Patrick Hall, in a letter that he submitted with the application dated November 28, 2018, is, and I quote, "to clean up the existing general commercial zoning along Highway 79 and to create 14 heavy industrial lots as these heavy industrial lots appear to match up well with the city's projected future land use, and the heavy industrial lots will be a good fit in the market." Just a brief history of the property. It is down on South Highway 79. There are a number of conditional use permits scattered throughout some of the applicant's requests. The properties that you see outlined in the yellow and the red through the Rapid Map software are the properties that we are concerned with today with this rezone. The applicant does own more land in the area that is contiguous, but the ones that are concerned with this at this point are the ones that are outlined in the yellow. This is Exhibit B, which was submitted by the applicants of what they're looking to do. So these areas here that are black are requests to rezone to heavy industrial. And these areas here, whoops, went too far. These areas here are to kind of clean up some of the general commercial zoning that's in the area. The two, so those are the red area. The two areas in the southwest, as you see, are red that say no change. The landowner does own those, but they're not looking to change the zoning. They want to keep those general commercial. Similar to that are also the properties with the dots that I'm making on the far east side. The landowner does own those properties as well, but those are currently zoned low-density residential. They're 40-acre blocks, and they're not looking to rezone any of those. And also the properties to the south of the section line down here, these are not involved in the request either. This is the zoning as exists today. The red area here is zone general commercial. The light green area here is currently general agriculture, and the area here is low-density residential. And as you can see on the properties, on the applicant's request, they're looking to change all the general commercial and this area of the low-density residential to heavy industrial, and also to take away the general commercial zoning up here along the section line across from the DC tie and also make that heavy industrial, and to clean up some of the general commercial zoning for these two properties in the northeast because they don't, the general commercial does not cover the entire property. This area was up several times for rezoning requests. Originally, it came in with a request for 250 new homesites, which would take access off of some of the section lines and also Old Folsom Road. That was ultimately, it didn't occur. The applicant then changed to request low-density residential in the area. And all of this area out here was general commercial at one time, but the Board of Commissioners did approve to change those to low-density residential. As of now, the Pennington County zoning ordinance does allow, well, the minimum lot size for low-density residential is three acres. Those are 40-acre lots. So there could be some density that occurs out in that area if it was subdivided. This is the future land use for Pennington County. Again, that red area is the general commercial. That area that was light green that turned to dark green is limited agriculture, which has a 10-acre minimum. And the applicant did change the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to adjust this area in here and here and here to, from limited agriculture to low-density residential. All right, so this is just getting through some of the history so you understand what's going on with the property. This is a look at the city's metropolitan planning organization's idea for, as the city grows and what their zoning districts are. If you notice, it stops basically right here, and you have agriculture zoning here. This is public. This is the shooting range down to the south. Their light gray is light industrial, just like ours, which is over here, and their dark, whether dark green or black, is also heavy industrial. So the city does see light and heavy industrial moving south down there, but basically has kind of stopped along that section line except for a little bit that encroaches into that northeast corner. Now, a little bit of history again of this property. Up in that northeast corner is an existing residence, and that is in your staff reports. If this rezoning is approved, conditional use permit to have a residence in general commercial will be required. Originally, when it was rezoned to general commercial, the person who lived in the house owned the property. That is no longer the case, and a conditional use permit will be required. It wasn't when the landowner was also the residence of the property. There's also a conditional use permit for an existing construction, storage, and salvage yard down here on the south off of 79. The applicant has stated, and the previous landowner has also stated, they're in the process of moving that to a location across from the DC tie. And there's also a conditional use permit for an airstrip down here. We've been in several talks with the current owners of the property and the agents, and they understand what is needed to be done to move this forward if these rezones are approved. So there's kind of your history. But I know the big question and of a concern is also buffers, because that has come up with staff. That's been brought up to the applicant and the landowner. And it's also came as a concern through some of the comments, through the interdepartmental review, and especially from the city of Rapid City. Normally, buffers are created through zoning. And again, this is a look at the current zoning of the property. And in previous requests from the previous landowner, the planning commission and the board requested and approved a commercial zoning buffer in this area if there was to be future residential development to the south across from the DC tie. Again, that was approved, and that is the existing conditions today. The applicants, the current applicants with their rezoning requests are not looking to have kind of what we call the step-down buffer for zoning. They're relying on the topography of the area to act as the buffer between heavy industrial and the low-density residential. So they are not, so as you have the request today is how they would like to keep it. In your staff reports, I believe I do include a topographical color map, but I did not include one in the slideshow, so I apologize to the audience. These are pictures, the next series of pictures are actually off of this section line to the south, looking into this direction. So this is at the entrance of the section line. Again, you can see that there is some elevation change out to the west. Whoops. It's going to go, this is looking straight north. This area up here is the, this area up here is that DC tie. And looking west from the top of the section line road. And then this is actually on the section line to the north of the subject property looking south. The DC tie is over here on the north side, and this is the area where the applicant is looking, or, sorry, yeah, the applicant is looking to move the existing construction storage yard if the rezone is approved. During a site visit, there was, we did notice that some work had been done around the pond here. It exceeded 10,000 square feet of dirt work. Also, work was done in a flood hazard area without our knowledge. So permits were required for both of those. The landowner and the agent were made aware of this. They contacted the previous landowner, who did come in, and we discussed what needed to be done at that time, and he did take the proper permits with him. So that is, I don't believe that that work that has been done should hold up the rezone, however, because they do have to take care of that anyway. Let's see, okay, this is a picture from Old Folsom Road, which is the bordering road to the far east. This is the DC tie right over here. And so this is just looking from, this is looking west. This is looking southwest from Old Folsom Road, and that's the end of those pictures. So let me get back to some other areas here. So the South Dakota Department of Transportation, when they routed this, didn't have any concerns about the applicant's request. However, they did request that if the land use or the traffic volumes to an existing state access, highway access changes, that they contact South Dakota Department of Transportation immediately and that they engage in future discussions of whether they need to do anything about the approaches that come on to the existing properties off of 79. And again, this was routed to this Rapid City Community Planning Development Services, and they said, and I quote, "The proposed commercial use adjacent to South Dakota Highway 79 appears to be appropriate land use. The proposed industrial land use appears to be a continuation of the industrial land use designation to the north of the property. Unless the residential lots are large enough to provide a buffer to the industrial land use, a transitional land use designation should be placed between the industrial and residential land uses." And again, the applicant is looking to rely on topography to act as that buffer. A lot of times with rezones, the question comes up of what can be done in that zoning district. So on page 17 of 19 in your staff reports, I did include the section of the Pennington County zoning ordinance, which lists the uses that are allowed in a heavy industrial district that are, can be done with building permits or conditional use permits. I am not aware of what the landowner is looking to do with the subject property. I just know that they're looking to rezonate the heavy industrial and to clean up some of the general commercial on the northeast side. But I do know that the applicant is looking to sell the properties because there are existing signs up at this time acknowledging that the applicant is looking to sell these. So with that, staff is seeking guidance, has sought guidance from the planning commission because staff would not recommend the rezone or the comprehensive plan amendment, but staff also would not approve either one of those. Because it does appear to be in harmony with the way the city is going and with their MPO. They are looking at it to be light industrial and heavy industrial. However, there is also heavy industrial county use in the area and heavy industrial county zoning in the area. However, it does not meet our future land use, which is the one you see here on the board, so staff would recommend, would have had to recommend denial on that. So staff sought help from the planning commission because of these two equal discrepancies, and staff, planning commission ultimately recommended approval of rezone 1809 and comprehensive plan amendment 1808.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does the board have any discussion or any comments for PJ before we go to the applicant?
I do have one for the.
I'm gonna wait until I hear from the audience if there's anybody there so that I can, my rebuttal will be fair.
Thank you, sir. Can we have the applicant, sir? If you want to come up? And just your name, sir.
My name is Brian Hammerbeck. I apologize, Pat Hall intended to be here, but he's stuck on an airplane at Rapid City Regional Airport, so I apologize for him.
This discussion on the property that you'd like to tell the board today and why the rezone, maybe you have some more comments on what's going to be there for the future, why you're changing it, just a few things that you might want to tell us.
Why we're changing it, on the west side, to clean up the general commercial on the two lots to the northwest. The DC tie is on the north. That creates a unique structure for this site. And then we have the shooting range on the south. Our goal is to make heavy industrial lots available to the market. We believe there's a demand for that, and then it's consistent, like PJ said, with what appears to be the future land use if it would continue south from that 234th Street. We do believe there's geographic buffers for the low-density residential on both sides, both to the south and to the west. PJ said you had a topo map, so you can see that. So, any other questions?
Ms. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Hammerbeck, so as I'm understanding it then, the current owners of the property have no plans for development of the property itself?
I'm not a developer. Our plan is to sell lots.
Okay.
So if that falls in within the development specter, then yes.
Okay, no, that isn't what I would consider to be falling into development. You're proposing to sell the lots for somebody else to actually develop on them if they so choose.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion for the applicant? Mark, do you have discussion for the applicant? Is Mark still with us, Joan? Is Commissioner DeSanto?
Sorry about that. Yes, I'm here.
Do you have any comments or questions for the applicant, Commissioner DeSanto?
Well, I do have a comment. We, I've received multiple calls and emails on this particular subject and feel that it needs additional review before I can make a decision on this. This is a large decision that could affect the homeownership in Black Gap, and my personal feeling is I'd like to continue it, to do a little further research on this change.
This is the first reading, Commissioner DeSanto. There will be two readings on this, just for information. But that would, any other comments, sir?
No, that, those are my only comments.
Commissioner Ross Connect?
When I first heard of this, I was a little alarmed too, but I took the liberty to watch the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which I think was a couple weeks ago. And it was two and a half hours long, and there's a lot of discussion on this. And the more, if you watched the video, and there was two or three of you at the meeting, but from a real estate appraiser, what I do for a living for 30 years, if I had to appraise this property, and the first thing I'd have to do before I could determine I could determine the values, I'd have to do a highest and best use analysis of the property, so that I'd know if I'm appraising residential home sites or land that could be developed residentially or commercial or industrial. Well, uh, the, the red, the general commercial, that's totally in harmony. I mean, that's, you want general commercial along major corridors, that's Rushmore Crossing, Rushmore Mall, Haynes Avenue, and then when you get further to the east, if you, I got on Rapid Map, I, I looked, I, I looked, I scoped out, so the landfill, what, is located a mile to the, so, and if that landfill is to expand, the only way I can see it going is south. And so I told myself, that land is not conducive to residential development, and if I was a, and that's not the way I would come, I wouldn't come up with the highest and best use of residential development, because Highway 79, it's just a commercial, it's a industrial corridor. Some commercial, but I can start naming, you got the cement plant, you got Merrillot, and these, these same companies went through the same process. There's a demand for heavy industrial. I mean, there just is, and it's got to go somewhere. So, if I was to develop the highest and best use of this particular property, it'd be industrial. I mean, from an appraisal standpoint. I mean, I can understand there's neighbors in the area, and they, and we got to hear them out too, but from a, an appraiser that's been doing this for 30 years, I am, you know, I have no problems with the heavy industrial. It's just a zoning. It's not necessarily saying this is what's going to happen in the future, that it's a built, we're not asking for building permit, we're asking for rezone. So, I talked to Mr. Hall, and I said, it was strictly what you said. He said, I, we're just trying to market 40-acre lots, heavy industrial. He said, to make those lots any smaller, we'd fall in the jurisdiction of the three-mile limit of Rapid City, then they would have to approve the plat. So, just marketing those in 40-acre lots, they can eliminate the plating process, so I just want to, uh, just, that's why, one of the reasons I wanted to run is so that I could use my appraisal experience to try to help some guidance in these. It's a tough choice, but I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant have any more comments? If not, let's go to the public. Thank you, sir. Who would like to speak first? Yes, ma'am? Your name, please?
I'm Karen McGregor. I'm a resident at the Black Gap subdivision. I'm also the, on the, the Black Gap Road District Board, so. We are concerned, this is only about a mile south of us, and heavy industrial uses, once you approve that, we don't have too much say after that. Anything could go in there, including feeding pens, stockyards, storage of raw hides, slaughter of animals, processing of junk waste, discarded or salvaged materials, concrete batch plant, transit, mixed plant or asphalt plant. And I sorted out, of course, the, the most unsightly or, or smelly uses I could, but the wind is going to blow, depending on what's done there, it's going to blow toward us in our development, so we're going to smell whatever, whatever is there, if it's an asphalt plant or a feedlot. We have $31 million worth of assessed value in our development, and we pay about $150,000 in county taxes, so I think we deserve a little bit of consideration too. There are uses, heavy industrial uses, that, that would be acceptable, but not knowing what any of those uses would be, and it looks like 14, 40-acre parcels, there could be a real mixed bag of, of what gets put in there. So I just ask you to, to keep that in mind, because we're just about a mile over the hill from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Yes, sir? Just your name, sir?
Oh, is this yours? Just give me a second. My name is David Hints. I am the vice president of the Black Gap Homeowners Association, and I come to you also with, with concerns about the, the rezoning of this, of this property. As Karen had stated, a lot of our concerns deal with the worst-case scenario of what's going to go on this property. Traffic isn't our concern. Being the vice president, we've had some, some people email me talking about traffic. 79 is built to take the traffic. It's four-lane, it's heavy duty, and, and we get that. But air quality is our concern, and is.
Which file was it, sir?
I'm gonna have an idea, but I don't want to click without.
Pen Co. Call.
Okay.
Uh, the first one, and, and I had sent the email, the first one I want to bring up is, is going to be this rap yearly. The first one I'm going to bring up is, this is called a wind rose. And what this is showing is the, the average wind, this is taken from the Rapid City Airport, the, the ASOS, what measures the wind at the airport, so this is on the prairie. This is not affected by the buildings that are in town, and this goes from, and we can't see it, it's kind of cut off, but this goes from January 1 of 1970 to December 9 of 2018. This shows the average wind here in Rapid City, and it's predominantly from north-northwest to north. So whatever blows off of these heavy industrial plots is going to blow right over our subdivision. The average wind speed, 11.3 miles an hour, and we're only calm, I mean, less than 10% of the time. We know it blows out here in western South Dakota. So anything that creates dust, smoke, whatever gets put onto these heavy industrial plots is going to come right over us. And again, we, we're not, heavy industrial covers, it could be warehouses. I don't think we believe it's going to be, but it's going to come right over the top of us. And the other thing that I want to point out, if, if we can close this, is go to, I believe it's this image right there. Since going back to 2009, there have been 92 air quality alerts that have been issued for West Rapid City, that the Department of Natural Resources, the South Dakota Department of Natural Resources, have asked the weather service to issue. These are for wind gusts from 40 to 70 miles an hour, and they're issued just for West Rapid City, west of the gap, for dust pollutants. I mean, you can, you can see the air quality alert that's right there. Now, they're not going to ask for that to be issued for us, but they issue it for the population based on West Rapid City. Again, this is 92 times, and the vast majority of those are issued for north-north winds, north-northwest to north winds, as, as the wind rose has shown. So I'm asking you also to please consider that, when you think about this rezoning, that this is going to be coming right over the top of us, as Karen had said, and when I was here for the, for the planning commission meeting, PJ had brought up the measuring from the south section line of that property to the north end of ours is less than a mile and a quarter. That's how close it is to us. I mean, we love being out there. We, we, I mean, we're on the prairie. We enjoy the peace, the calm, and the quietness. This is what we do. I mean, PJ has already said, this does not conform to their county plan. We ask that you just consider leaving it. It's nice and quiet when you come up from Rapid City to the south. It's nice, it's wide open, you see the prairie, you pop over the hill, and there's Rapid The, in, in the plan, they're relying on topography for the border. Well, we're talking about winds. Winds don't care about topography. This stuff's going to blow over the top of us. One other minor thing that's, that's going to be a possibility with this, depending on what goes there, our waters is well water. So again, whatever goes there, something that leaches into the soil may become a possibility, might become a concern for us. I'm not saying it will, it might. And once this goes into, I mean, if this is passed, and once this goes into the building permit phase and everything else phase, then we have very little say anymore. This is where we make our stand, this is where we make our say, and this is where we have to bring our concerns to you and let you know this really bothers us.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Did you hear any more?
No.
Hey, who's the next person to speak? Thank you, David. Sir, just your name.
Michael Lotak. Good morning, commissioners. I'm going to take a little bit of your time. I am a professional real estate agent here in Rapid City, and Mr. Roskinick had explained about the ability for best usage. Based on usage, that land that's south is absolutely very low in, in the geographic areas. It's kind of a basin. We're dealing with the ability for groundwater, things that are unknown based on, you know, heavy industrial. In my opinion, the best use for that land is continually general ag. It's been that way. I understand growth. I also understand the ramifications of what happens to subdivisions that are somewhat connected to heavy industrial. I think this situation is running parallel with the issue we're having in the Copper Oak subdivision based on some of the air quality, home values that are being, need to be addressed. I think you guys understand what I'm talking about. I think it's the Crowell Concrete Mining that they want to do. It's, it's very concerning to me as a real estate broker and a homeowner in the Black Gap subdivision. I'm also on the road district aspect of Black Gap, so I'm really understand what's going on in our subdivision. It's, it's almost horrifying to think that 125 homes can be affected by air quality, water quality, and I want, I'd really like to have you guys take in consideration that this really needs to be nipped in the bud, and I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Guys, we're not supposed to clap, even though I understand that's your people, but if, if we could refrain from clapping, anybody else from the public, please come up?
I just had a question.
Come on, ma'am, come on up. Nope, come on up for us, and state your name, please. Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Danielle Walters, and I just wanted to know if anyone knows if there's been an environmental impact study done at all on heavy industrial in that area, and how would it affect Black Gap?
I can answer one of those. We did have a study when I was on the city council for the ACDC converter, that area, and the city had put heavy industrial around the ACDC converter, and then light industrial around for a buffer. So, I don't know if that goes further out, because I haven't seen it for years, but there might have been, in that area, they might have done the whole area, so there might have been an environmental impact study, Ms. Danielle.
Because I'm thinking if it's, if it actually is owned heavy industrial, couldn't, couldn't somebody possibly have to pass some kind of a test, you know, against a study, you know, on what they would throw out, you know, and that would blow over to our neighborhood? It just seems to me like if it's, if it's owned heavy industrial, anything could go in there. We're a mile away. I have a little windmill in my backyard. It's blowing from the north all the time, all the time. That's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Danielle. Anybody else from the public? You're welcome to come speak. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Pam, excuse me, my name is Pam Paul. You talk about the DC tie out there. It doesn't spew any pollution. There is nothing out there that makes dust. If they would put in a lime plant or any kind of a concrete plant, we would be as West Rapid City is, with lime going out over our vehicles, over our children, over our homes, and we know what that's done on the west side of Rapid City, and we'd have absolutely no ramification to come back on that. So I think there's a big difference between the Rapid City DC tie and a lime plant or a concrete plant going in, in that area.
Thank you, Ms. Pam. Anybody else from the public? Sir?
My name is Chuck Anderson. I've lived out there for 12 years. I've owned three different homes out there. I love that neighborhood. I just built a brand-new home within the last year and a half. I would never have built out there if we knew they were going to do this. That's a lot of money that's going to come out of my pocket if you guys pass this. And I don't know about these folks, but I can't afford that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public? Okay? Sir?
My name's Robert Lockhart. I'm new to the area. Moved here about, oh, a year and a half ago. One of the things that we really like about South Dakota is that people listen, and we hope that you listen to us. It's not about money all the time. You talked about that. I appreciate your experience and everything, but it's not always about money. It's about a quality of life. And I think if we put something in there, heavy industry, it's going to affect many lives. I'd just like for you to remember that. It's not always about money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else from the public? Welcome to come speak. There you go. How are you, sir?
Hello.
Your name, sir?
Mark Kaptansky, resident of Black Gap, and I just want to echo the sentiments that have been said so far. Understanding that highest and best use may attribute to value, but not best use for all involved, be it the property owners that abut, or in a press, or in a preceding area to the existing property, and I think that it's going to have a hugely negative effect on the perception of Black Gap, on our property values, and on the surrounding area, which is currently open agricultural livestock. And if you put in heavy industrial, it changes the entirety of the area, and will impact us financially and our health. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if not, board discussion? Commissioner LaCroy.
Thanks, Madam Chair. PJ, I've got a question for you. Right now, this is for a rezone.
Correct.
And it, so we can zone it what we think it should be. We hear a lot about what could happen, what's going to happen, what we're afraid of could happen out there. What, could you explain to us a little more processes of, once it's rezoned, and getting permits to do what they're asking?
Wondering if there should be a visual for this, but yeah, so if it was rezoned to heavy industrial, which is Section 212 of the Pendleton County zoning ordinance, the intent of that ordinance is as follows: "To establish areas for necessary industrial and related uses for such a nature that they require isolation from many other kinds of land uses, and make provisions for commercial uses which are necessary to service the immediate needs of people in the area." That's Section A of, I'm sorry, subsection A of Section 212. Then, Section 212 goes into subsection B, which lists 24 uses for the property that may be included in heavy industrial, but they're not limited to those uses, and I believe some of those uses were read off before. I can go search it on the internet and pull it up if you'd like. Then there's also a list of conditional uses which will require, if landowners looking to do those, which will require a conditional use permit, which then, if they're approved by the planning commission, they will have, as the name implies, conditions put on those. The previous list of 24 uses, again, it's not just limited to 24, those 24 uses, but those uses usually require just like a, a building permit or possibly a construction permit. They don't require a conditional use permit. And right now, as you know, the county does not have building codes or building inspectors, so if there was a building permit for a, for a, a structure, we would look at the area and then issue it based on our current criteria. But again, it all depends on which one of the uses an applicant is looking to go for, or, sorry, a landowner is looking to apply for. We just, we just don't know. It's not part of the criteria for approval for us.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a follow-up? Commission? Commissioner Roskinick?
PJ, do you got a history on this property? It's my understanding that this property's been under the same ownership for a number of years.
It was under, it was under, it was owned by the Morris's for a number of years and was recently sold to Pat Hall, I believe in its entirety. It was general agriculture for some time, and then... Um, it was general agriculture for some time, and then, uh, we've worked with Mitch, uh, Mr. Mitch Morris for several years to get it to how it is zoned today. Yep.
Uh, so my thoughts on that is that, you know, the reason, uh, it's been ag is just because the family is happy with that, but I think we all have to admit Rapid City's grown. I mean, it's growing in every direction, so if it's, uh, not heavy industrial, which is, as I mentioned earlier, you got a lot of heavy industrial to the north, and Highway 79 is basically an industrial corridor. If you drive down there and you look to the left and the right, the landfill and the cement plant and Merrill Lot and Rushmore Forest Products, what else would you suggest that be? I mean, obviously, it's not, we're talking about property rights, so then the, the, the new owner of that has property rights too. So what would you, the audience suggest that the new owner do with that? Obviously, the highest estimate is this is not ag.
Sir?
I'm just asking what...
Nope, guys, nope, 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 not yet, not yet, not yet. Thank you.
I do have the city's MPO up on the screen at this time. The yellow line is city limits, and then the items outside of that are basically related to the one-mile septic jurisdiction. They don't go, and they only, the MPO only goes out to their plating jurisdiction, which is about three miles, roughly. Sorry, it's hard on this computer to get it to look into. This is the current MPO.
You have a follow-up, Ron?
Well, I guess my, my question is if I own that property and, and I knew that I could develop it, I, the property lends itself to some form of development and, uh, and the applicant is asking for heavy industrial, uh, so I'm just asking if we can do it in order, some, if, what, uh, you know, realizing the applicant has property rights, what do, and then it's obvious, obviously, development. I'd like to hear what some suggestions are, so that we can be open-minded about this.
So PJ, can you pull up the zoning map again and then show me on that map?
For us?
Where, um...
County zoning?
And city. Do we have one with both?
Um, I have different slides that show it, yeah.
Okay, so that's...
This is current county, and, and then this is, again, this is outside city limit, so this is just their projection of what they would like to see.
Right. So they're going light industrial, heavy industrial. Do they, I didn't see they had any buffers. It's, the heavy industrial by the DC tie, they didn't have any buffers. They had some medium density, if you see on the corner in light, um, um, low density right next to it. Is that because, I'm gonna guess that those properties were already there before the DC tie came?
Yeah.
And then where's Black Gap?
Black Gap is down here.
Okay, and can you tell me where there's heavy industrial up to Black Gap in that area from basically the north of 79 where the light industrial is to Black Gap?
So our zoning or the city's?
Um, ours.
Okay.
'Cause at this point, um...
So this is current city, I'm sorry, this is current county.
Okay.
Um, the light blue, sorry, down here is Black Gap.
Okay.
Um, the light green is general agriculture. The darker green is limited agriculture.
Okay.
And then you hit, and then over here is, uh, low-density residential, and then you hit the applicant's properties up here.
Okay, now there's some...
That's our current.
Okay, but isn't there like a junkyard and some other stuff on 79?
Yep, sorry.
In those areas? So we do have some, and the shooting range, what is that? Is that...
That right now is currently, uh, general agriculture with the conditional use permit. The city has it as a public, quasi-public zoning.
That'd be the shooting range, how about the, um, I don't know if it's an auto salvage or what it is, but where's that at?
Yep, that's up here as heavy.
That's heavier. Okay, that's further. Okay. Thank you.
Yep, and then the future land use, I don't know. Did you wanna see that?
Sure, that'd be good.
And that's the future land use.
Okay. Board, do we have some questions?
Question.
Commissioner Drews.
So obviously, all of this property falls within the three-mile limit that we're talking about, the hall property.
All the properties fall within their plating jurisdiction. The county still does the building permits and rezones, stuff like that.
Right, but it is in the three-mile limit.
It is, and I can show you if you'd like.
Yeah, no, I don't...
Okay.
Board, Mark, Commissioner DeSanto, do you have any discussion?
Well, I, um, I think that there, that we can address this and make both sides happy by rezoning that into light industrial as opposed to heavy industrial. I do believe there needs to be a buffer zone between that neighborhood that's existed there for quite some time, um, and heavy industrial. I, I, I'm very concerned about all of the concerns that they expressed, the water pollution, air pollution, noise pollution. Um, I can't speak to, uh, whether or not it'll reduce or increase or whatever property values, um, but as far as those other safety concerns are, are concerned, that is a concern. And, um, if we were to allow for a light industrial, then that would probably alleviate the possibility of having, well, it would alleviate the possibility of having a gravel operation or a cement operation or something like that that's gonna create a great amount of, of pollution, dust, and, and interference that way. So that's what I would have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner DeSanto. Um, if I could, I'm gonna speak on the ACDC converter we did. I started at planning commission, and supposedly there was no vibration or noise coming off that thing. Um, we did a study, and there was. It was on the bedrock. If you look at the zeros, if you look at the study, it has lots of zeros, and the folks that were to the northeast of that were the most affected because of that bedrock. Now, if there's bedrock over in this heavy industrial area or this area across from, is it, I don't even, I think Old Folsom or 244th, I can't, before I thought Old Folsom came down, but it must be, the north section is 234th, if I'm right. Anyway, the DC tie's on the other side. I was one of those that believed heavy industrial and talked to aerospace people and other people that knew about noise and vibration and decibels and all that stuff, and that they needed, said that needs a buffer. It does need a buffer because actually the buildings are even commercial around it because it does put off vibration and noise. So do I think there could be a compromise where I'm in favor of putting the heavy industrial by that converter? Can there be a buffer between, um, some of the neighbors? I would hope that there would be some solution to find that out, but if we're talking by that converter, um, I'm, I believe it needs to be heavy industrial to light industrial to medium density, that kind of thing. Um, and we also have to take in consideration that the city is going to move forward towards your developments. And right now, they do have it light industrial and heavy industrial, and Ron is right. There is a, um, basically a dump, and they are moving to the south. At least they were when I was on the city council. They were moving to the south. So you guys are, are getting heavy industrial on the other side, basically, and the smell and the dust and everything from a unfortunate landfill in the future, and hopefully they take that into account. But I think the highest and best use, I'm with Ron in most of that area, in this area, that it needs to be heavy industrial, light industrial, and always a commercial buffer by the road. So, um, ready to listen to what the board is saying on, and moving forward on this, but, um, from experience, I think I would go still and take, um, Commissioner Ross Connect's, uh, advice, so unless otherwise. Do we have a motion or more discussion on this? Hold on just a sec, sir. Let's get a motion and then discussion from the board and the public if they'd like.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
This is the, uh, the first reading. Certainly, uh, first reading does not give anything permanent, and so I'm gonna move that, uh, we approve, uh, as the first reading on the rezon.
Been a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been a motion by Commissioner Drews and a second by Commissioner Ross Connect. Any discussion from the board?
Sorry, Commissioner Drews, does that also include the approval of the comprehensive plan amendment?
Yes, it would be, as it's written right here.
Okay, thank you.
Sir? Public, to be fair. This is first reading. There will be probably conditional use permits and other things on these properties, so you do have a second chance to visit on this, and I will go out again, um, to this property, and, uh, I will be voting, um, at this point to move forward on the first reading, but I will take in consideration of looking at this a little bit closer for that second reading and see if we can find some solution. Any other comments? If not, roll call, please. Sir, go ahead.
Chuck Anderson again. Rapid City freaked out when they wanted to put an asphalt plant near a soccer field, and they voted it down. Now you're gonna end up sticking it right down by us, and we live there. Thank you.
Sir, they voted for the sock, the asphalt plant is over there, sir. Thank you.
My bad.
It's okay, sir.
Please also remember that there's no septic systems out there or no sewer systems out there, so whatever does get built out there will be a self-contained sanitary system, and again, we're talking about well water, which is what we have. So again, keep that in mind when this comes up for the second reading, when you look into this further, because this affects all of us out there. Thank you.
Folks, this is first reading. On that second reading, this is just a rezon. When you do conditions or they build something out there, we can make conditions in order to figure out for wind and, um, water and some of the concerns that you have. So this is first reading of a rezon. Thank you. Roll call, please. DeSanto? Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
No.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no. Thank you. Item L.
Item L is FEMA proposed comments on draft policy on floodplain management requirements for agricultural structures and accessory structures. Essentially, we heard about this during a conference, uh, for the Association of Floodplain Managers, which three of us are certified floodplain managers in our office. There's four in the county. Dustin Willett is also the other floodplain manager, uh, which requires update and continuous training and, and such, but it, for us to be, the reason that we're certified floodplain managers is because the county has a lot of floodplain, um, in it. And the county is also, uh, part of the National Flood Insurance Program, the NFIP, which allows, uh, residents to get discounts on their insurance. With involvement in the NFIP, uh, we have adopted a floodplain damage prevention ordinance some years ago, which kind of dictates how, uh, structures can, can or cannot be or should or should not be, uh, developed in the county in special flood hazard areas. Over the time, FEMA has found out that accessory structures and...
Folks, hold on just a sec, PJ. Folks, we can hear you up here. Thank you, folks. We appreciate that. Thank you. PJ, sorry.
Sure, no problem. Um, FEMA, which also is, uh, works with the NFIP, um, has, has experienced some confusion over the years with how accessory structures and agriculture structures are handled and described and what the processes are for putting them up in special flood hazard areas. Because usually, uh, those structures are not built like a residence, uh, they're not built to the same standards, there's usually cheaper, uh, materials that go into them. Um, some of them have, uh, you know, the sides of the building even two or three feet above the ground, and residents were being, becoming concerned with those being rated and, um, for insurance purposes, the same as other structures that were built with much better materials. And so what FEMA has, is asking, and, uh, is that the draft policy that they put out is that the counties or local jurisdictions that have, um, anything to do with the National Flood Insurance Program, comment on their first attempt at a draft to kind of clarify some of the concerns with the ag structures and with the accessory structures. It does create clarity on, um, what those structures are as they're defined through, through FEMA, and also better describes the policy of, and the procedures of how to move forward to put those in. It's to make things easier on the ag owners, on the landowners. If this, uh, policy was adopted as it is today, uh, our flood, uh, damage prevention ordinance would need to be updated just to be in conformance and not to contradict what's going on. Um, staff actually, um, would recommend approval of the support from the board on this. However, you don't need to do that today. Uh, the due date is, uh, not till the end of January, um, but we did put it in here today, a draft letter, possibly if the board wanted to make a motion today to support it. But again, the draft policy, even though it makes things easier, it does not remove permitting or mitigation or multi-mitigation requirements from landowners. The entire thing is to minimize the number of structures that are destroyed or damaged from flooding, and also to, uh, set some type of building criteria for those structures through, uh, tie-downs or having the, um, the floors raised up so waters go underneath them, so that those structures don't get destroyed, washed downstream, block a culvert, and then cause further damage and further possible loss of life and property. So that's what all these policies are for. Um, you can make a motion today. I'm here for discussion, or if we can do it next meeting.
Board, PJ is looking for a draft letter for the, um, floodplain management policy. Is there any one discussion or would like to make that motion?
I'd make that motion to support the draft policy.
Commissioner LaCroy?
As presented.
Is the first, who's second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Drews. Discussion? Mark, DeSanto, Commissioner DeSanto, do you have discussion on the draft letter?
No discussion.
Thank you. Not? Roll call, please, Ms. Kara.
Are you just, um, doing, are you also approving the chair's signature or no?
Yes, excuse me.
The whole thing?
Draft letter, yep.
Yeah, draft letter and the chair's signature.
Okay, she's making sure. Um, DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your help today, Mr. PJ. Items from public? Anybody would like to speak from the public? This is your time. If not, um, item 25, do we have the executive session, Ms. Holly? Nope?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Commissioner LaCroy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, roll call, roll call, sorry. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye.